The July meeting of the State Planning Board. The agenda this evening involves the following items. First, the approval of the minutes of the June 16 meeting and also a June 3 planning board workshop at which a public hearing was scheduled. One item of old business is a private access permit at 1200 Shore Road. The Rudolph F. Fethenrepper IV Trust is requesting the permit. We have two other items of new business. The Paper Street Public Engagement Plan recommendations. This is something the board has worked on for several sessions now as part of the Public Engagement Plan -- excuse me -- for the 2015 Paper Street Report. And this will include the public hearing on our recommendations. There will also be consideration of a technical amendments request. The board is requesting the town council refer to the planning board a preparation of a package of technical amendments of the various zoning ordinance for consideration. And finally, there'll be an opportunity for public comment. First item of business, we'll consider them separately. We have the minutes of the June 16 meeting, which have been circulated for your review. Do any board members have questions or comments? Being none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 16, 2015 meeting as written.
Thank you, Caroline. Is there a second?
Second.
Henry, we have a seconded motion. Is there any discussion on the seconded motion? All in favor? Opposed? The motion carries unanimously?
Absolutely. I abstained since I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. Well, it still carries unanimously. The other set of meetings at the June 3 public workshop, we had one item of business for which minutes were required. And that was to -- excuse me. Oh, consider adding a zoning map amendment to the special event facility overlay district zoning ordinance amendment. That's a mouthful, which had been scheduled for June 16. You've also received a copy of the minutes at that point. Were there any questions or comments by the board? Entertain a motion to approve the minutes at that workshop?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the June 3 planning board workshop.
Thank you, Caroline. Is there a second?
Second.
Jonathan, is there any discussion on the seconded motion? All in favor? Opposed? The motion carries unanimously? Thank you.
You abstained.
Another abstention.
Yes. Elaine abstained, the both, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
The next item of business is the 1200 Shore Road private accessway permit. This is the application -- we're considering the application on its merits. The procedure will be as follows. The planner will discuss how the project fits in with town regulations. We'll ask the applicant or his representative to summarize any changes made to the plans. We will open the meeting for public comment. At the close of the public hearing, we'll discuss the application. And at the end of the discussion, we'll have the option to table, deny, approve, or approve the conditions. Maureen, would you like to give us the background in this?
Sure. The lot is located in the Residence A District. Their minimum lot size in the Residence A District is 80,000 square feet, and the lot exceeds that amount. However, it does not have any frontage on a town-accepted road. It does, however, have a 100-foot wide easement that extends from Shore Road and connects up to the lot. And it's within that easement that a driveway is proposed. The applicant is requesting a private accessway permit from the planning board.
Thank you. We would now hear from the applicant's representative.
Good evening, Chair Curry and many board members. Uh-oh, Maureen. What did you do? I was a little -- no, I got it, I got it. It's a little too -- good evening. Stephen Moore from Moore &amp; Sheridan, landscape architects here on behalf of the Rudolph F. Fethenrepper Trust. And much to my delight, Peter is here today. Kim? Peter is Rudolph F. Fethenrepper of the Trust. I'm just going to start for the benefit of the public and the board at the beginning and then bring us through the project so there's some framework in which the board knows they're making the decision. In 1997, Peter and Mallory gifted a parcel of land to the land trust, and they held the 2.34 acre square that's right in the middle of this plan. They held the fee interest in that, and then they kept the access egress and utility rights in the 100-foot wide L-shaped strip to the west or to the left of that center lot as you look at it. At the time, we prepared a recording plan. Because that recording plan now is going to be updated, we've prepared this amended recording plan. It doesn't require board approval or signature, but this plan will run with the parcel, with the land, and can then be referenced in the deeds as the lot of record that passes along with the property. What's of import on this particular plan are the three following things. It's been updated for all the abutters and the deed calls. Secondly, it specifically references the set of covenants that have been prepared -- excuse me -- and are attached to the so-called Beach Lot, which is the small lot down right on the waterfront with the indent in it. That's the 1.14 acre parcel. So note three references, those restrictions and covenants, which Peter has executed and now rests with the town. The language has been approved by the town. As the board moves forward and we secure approval for the project, then we will record that restrictive covenant that doesn't allow any structures on the Beach Lot except for a set of stairs for access to the water. We also have added on that plan that large note at the bottom, which is Note 4, the language that Maureen had provided in her memo that sets forth very clearly the activities that are allowed outside the building envelope. And for reference, what we've done on this reporting plan is we've shown the setback, which is that inner dashed line inside the box. So we have a centerpiece that's about 1.64 acres of unrestricted area, and then the surrounding area and the setbacks fall under those restrictions that are set forth in Note 4. And that is lifted verbatim from Maureen's comments. I think we corrected one spelling issue on it. What we submitted into the record was this set of existing conditions, which has the topography, the trees, all located in that right-of-way, and then the wetland. As you recall, when we walked the site, we had flagged the proposed road. We had identified the 11 trees that will be cut as a result of the road construction. And for clarity's sake, I want to make it clear that the trees that were flagged are not just the trees that are immediately in the 18-foot roadbed. They're trees that we knew would be lost because of the associated side slopes and culvert construction. So you may recall as we walked this site, within the area that is impacted by the driveway, which is shown here in the gray, there are something in the order of 86 to 88 trees, dependent upon how you count them within that 100-foot right-of-way. And we're impacting 11 of those trees. As I said at the previous two meetings, the intent of the driveway is to preserve that overstorey and canopy of the large collection of red oaks, to not impact the wetland that's there, and to really match the grade that exists on the site, again, to minimize grade fill, cut, and drainage. And with the help of that string that you saw that showed the finished grade, I think you had a pretty good visualization of how that driveway really hugs the terrain coming down that 100-foot wide strip. In terms of changes in this particular plan, the only real change is that culvert, too. As you recall, the town engineer had a list of 19 or 21 comments, and we addressed all those in the affirmative. One of the interesting things on this is that by lowering the culvert, which was the inner culvert near the turnaround, we actually changed the flow of direction, so we had to switch the watershed and recalculate the watershed area. And it doesn't really affect any of the performance of the road, but it does accomplish what the town engineer was looking for in terms of increased culvert coverage by the roadbed. The turnaround you can see is dimensioned and conforms with your standards. And really, that's the only change on this, is that adjustment in that culvert. We also added a note that specifically references the fact that there will be a streetlight out at Shore Road, but that there are no other streetlights proposed along the driveway. The reason we added that note was because of our discussions on the site and the sense that if we put that on this plan, then it's clear as part of the private accessway permit that the board understood that, and those restrictions will apply to adding lighting along that driveway. The road profiles on the bottom, again, nothing has changed in there. I'm just highlighting this drawing. This was the drainage plan. And you can see the large bubble that is now on the east side of the driveway. Originally, the watershed was from the west side, similar to watershed 1, but now it's moved over to the other side and drains back and into land that is under the control of Hidden Court. And if you look at those stormwater calculations and understand them, the change in runoff is de minimis. There's no real effective change in the runoff because of that change in the watershed. But it's been noted and is part of the record for that. We then have a set of detail sheets, which Maureen's computer has there. Nothing has changed on these detail sheets in terms of the information on it. We did clarify the discrepancy between the text and the plan in terms of the length of pavement. That was one piece that the town engineer picked up on, so it's clearly spelled out now that it's 20 feet of pavement on both plans and sections and details. And in terms of any other substantive change, there's really nothing from the original submission to this. What we've done is picked up Maureen's comments and Steve Harding's comments, incorporated in the plan set, and have that plan set now finished, hoping, again, that the board could approve this this evening for that private accessway permit. With that, I think I'll turn it back to the board to open to the public unless Peter or Kim have anything to add. Thank you, Peter. Back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do any board members have questions for Mr. Moore before we proceed to the public hearing? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on this application. Are there any members of the public who would like to be heard? Yes, sir. If you would step the podium, give us your name and address, and I'd like to hear from you.
I'm Paul Farrow. I live at 1208 Shore Road, which is immediately to the west of this parcel, along where the driveway runs. And I just have a simple question. The notation about the lights in the driveway, does that preclude future lights or just mean there's none designed in now?
I believe we think it means the application as submitted, if it were approved, would be no lights. There's nothing to say in the future, somebody couldn't come back and try to amend the permit. Maureen, is that correct?
Yes.
In which case, the addition of lights would be considered on its merits, but right now, no lights.
So they're not --
They're not precluded in perpetuity, it's just -- and it would take an amendment to the permit for lights to be added. So there would be another one of these proceedings where you would have a chance to be heard about your feelings.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Are there any other members of the public who would like to be heard on this application? There being none, we'll close the public hearing. But also, I add for the benefit of the public, we had a site walk on this property and spent quite a bit of time there, walking the route of the proposed driveway and having a description from the applicant's representatives about how it would be laid out. We had a chance to look at the abutting property because they had raised concerns also. Is there any discussion by members of the board on this? Okay, I just add my own comment. I think this has been very carefully vetted, carefully documented, well-prepared application. If there is no further discussion, we'll entertain a motion from the board, the findings of the applicant approval. Caroline?
Okay. Oops, let me get to the right page. Motion for the board to consider findings of fact. Rudolph F. Fethenrepper IV Trust is requesting a private accessway permit to construct a driveway to a lot located at 1200 Shore Road, which requires review under Section 19-7-9 Private Accessways. The private accessway standards require delineation of a building envelope. The town engineer has recommended minor clarifying revisions to the plan. The application substant -- substantially complies with Section 19-7-9 Private Accessways and Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Rudolph F. Fethenrepper for Trust for a private accessway permit to construct a driveway to a lot located at 1200 Shore Road be approved subject to the following conditions. The plans be revised for compliance with the town engineer's comments and his letter dated July 15, 2015. That the building envelope be labeled and a note added to the plan describing activities allowed outside the building envelope as follows. Activities outside the building envelope are restricted to the installation of driveway and utilities. Vegetation outside the building envelope shall be preserved. Hazard, dead or storm-damaged trees may be removed after consultation with the code enforcement officer as follows. The removal of standing-dead trees resulting from natural causes or storm-damaged trees is permissible without the need for replanting as long as the removal does not result in the creation of new lawn areas or other permanently cleared areas, and stumps are not removed. The area shall be required to be naturally re-vegetate and to be planted with native plants within one year if natural vegetation has not been established. For purposes of this provision, dead trees are those trees that contain no foliage during the growing season. Three, that the plans be revised to reflect the above conditions and that there be no issuance of a building permit nor alteration of the site until the plan has been signed by the planning board and recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds. At the time of plan recording, the restrictions on the Beach Lot previously approved by the town attorney and code enforcement officer and the revised plan, which removes the building envelope from the Beach Lot, shall also be recorded.
Thank you. Do we have a second for this motion?
Second.
Elaine, thank you. Is there any discussion on the seconded motion?
I just wanted to know who's responsible for the replanting.
The owner.
The owner of the building site or the --
The owners will probably.
For the area outside. He's responsible for the area outside their building.
This is a note that has evolved over time. The planning board has helped create this note because we've had situations where people have been precluded from removing any vegetation outside the building envelope, and then people have come -- in fact, we have someone in the audience right now who had to come back to the planning board and get their plan amended to allow the removal of trees. So this is a note that allows removal of trees that really should be removed without allowing trees to be removed that just expand the lawn area and undermine the board's desire to create a buffer.
Fair.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Call for a vote on the seconded motion?
I'd just like to make a comment for the audience because we're not having a lot of discussion. The site walk answered every question we had, and the minor changes that the engineer has recommended are very, very minimal, and it is captured in the motion. So that's why there's so little discussion on this.
Good clarification. Thank you, Caroline. There being no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously? Thank you.
I would ask, Maureen, just procedurally, if this is acceptable to the chair. I have the Mylar. What I'm hoping is to drop that off and have the board sign it, but, Maureen, you hold it until you've gone through the plans and made sure they comply. Is that -- in terms of protocol, that allows us to keep it moving because we have addressed those.
Yes.
Those questions. So if that's acceptable to the chair, I'll provide the Mylar in one print copy.
Great. And you'll let us know and drop it and sign it?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, that concludes our agenda item on the private accessway permit.
Were you muted by hand or are you good with the signing of the Mylar?
Just leave it there. I'll take it.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. I appreciate it. The paper's on top, the Mylar's underneath.
The next -- excuse me. Item of business is the Paper Street Public Engagement Plan. The town council's referred to the planning board as described in the Paper Street Public Engagement Plan, review of the 2015 Paper Street Report. The planning board has reviewed the report at the June 3, 2015 workshop and at the June 16, 2015 meeting. The public hearing in this matter is scheduled for this evening. We'll proceed as follows. The town planner will summarize the Paper Street review process, which we have used. We will then open the hearing for comments, questions, and the like from members of our public. At the close of the public hearing, the board will discuss a recommendation to the town council. And we will essentially adopt a resolution to review -- to recommend this report to the town council or not. Maureen, could you provide the background, please?
Sure. I think you've done a lot of it, Peter, but Paper Streets is something that the town extended for 20 years in 1997. We have another 20-year -- our 20-year extension is coming to an end in 2017. So the town council decided Paper Streets have been very controversial in some areas, and so the council has adopted a three-step process. Part one of the process is to have the planning board and the conservation commission review Paper Streets and make a recommendation to the council. The planning board's own rules state that you only make decisions when you're at a full meeting, and you usually hold a public hearing before you make any decision. So that's why we're here tonight, for you to hold a public hearing. You've reviewed the Paper Streets. There is a chart in your package that includes the list of all the Paper Streets we have identified. It evaluates the Paper Streets for the presence of things such as driveways or utilities, the need for them to be used for lot access or as a turnaround, being used as an existing trail or a potential trail, and its adjacency to open space. So if you look at that chart, you'll see that you've recommended almost all of the streets be retained. There's a draft recommendation on Thompson Road that you probably want to look at and refine a little bit more. And in your package, there is a drawing, and I put that in there in order to assist you with a piece of correspondence you received. Approximately the first 200 feet of Thompson Road from Shore Road is occupied with private driveway, private road. And then if you measure from Shore Road another 625 feet, you get to the lot where the property owners have asked that the right-of-way of Thompson Road be preserved. And then if you wanted to preserve the right-of-way of Thompson Road all the way to the far boundary of that lot, that would be approximately 900 feet. So Thompson Road is one that is still something the board may want to refine. Right now, in the draft recommendation, the recommendation that is that it would be preserved only for the first 200 feet and then the remainder vacated. I have confirmed that after the first 200 feet, all of the land, all of the lots on Thompson Road are owned by people who also have frontage on Beach Bluff Terrace. So unless there's more questions about that, what's before the board tonight is to consider a recommendation to the council, and that would wrap up the Part 1 portion of the Paper Street Public Engagement Plan. Any questions?
Could you also, Maureen, comment on the next phase of the proceeding where people will also have a chance to be heard?
So the Paper Street Public Engagement Plan had a Part 1 process where both the planning board and the conservation commission would provide recommendations to the council. The conservation commission finished their recommendations last Tuesday night, and if the planning board finishes its recommendations tonight, the Part 2 portion would begin. And that is a new initiative by the town council to host a number of neighborhood area meetings. And those meetings have not been scheduled, they haven't been located. It's my expectation that the council is waiting for the recommendations from the conservation commission and the planning board to be completed, and then they're going to initiate that phase. And that is the phase where they are really emphasizing public comment. So certainly, anyone can comment at any public meeting of the planning board, but that's the one where they're hoping to gather the most amount of public comment. And then Part 3 would be the traditional council public hearing before they consider any action.
Thank you. Well, next -- oh, I'm sorry.
Just one question. Have we heard anything from any other residents of Beach Bluff Terrace with regards to the Thompson Road, Paper Street?
There was one owner on Beach Bluff Terrace who expressed support for having the Thompson Road eliminated. He has not provided anything in writing. He just came into the office and had a chat.
Was that somebody who lived further down?
Yes.
Towards the dead-end street?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board or Maureen? Okay, we will now open -- excuse me. The meeting for the public hearing on this matter. Are there any members of the public here tonight who would like to be heard? If you would approach the podium and give your name and address and --
Chris Bullis, and I live at 60 Edgewood Road. And I own a lot on Stone Drive. It's about just under 8,000 square feet. It abuts Paper Street that now dead-ends at the Blueberry Ridge subdivision. So it's only about 70 feet long. I know it may connect with the part of the Green Belt, so if it were abandoned, though, it'd put me very close to having a buildable lot with the 10,000 square feet. So I'm just here to see if that might be something that would be considered. I'm sure a pedestrian easement could be worked out, so it could.
I'm sorry, sir. The property that you're talking about is located on Blueberry?
It's on Stone Drive. I do have a couple copies of that.
If we could locate it on --
Mr. Bullis, is the Paper Street you're talking about also labeled U-1-1A?
Yes.
Yes. It's U-1-1A is the identification label on our Paper Street inventory.
Okay.
U-1-1A.
And we had recommended to retain?
To retain that because immediately west of U-1-1A, you'll see that there's a pedestrian easement that connects that Paper Street to the dead end of, I believe it's Red Oak Drive? Nope, Fernwood Lane. So that's why it's been recommended to be retained.
And Mr. Bullis, you were asking that -- And, Mr. Bullis, you were asking that it be vacated?
Right. I was asking for it to be vacated. I'm sure, like I said, a pedestrian easement could be worked out, that it'd be continued access to the Green Belt.
And why, sir, were you asking that to be vacated?
Well, as it stands, the lot's just under 8,000 square feet. At one time, it was a buildable lot. With the ordinance change to 10,000, it was no longer... It wasn't grandfathered in. So if the Paper Street is vacated, I'll get to half of the, you know, to the middle of the Paper Street, which would put me just about at 10,000 square feet. So that's...
Mr. Bullis, aren't you still a little under?
I am. I'm about just under 200 square feet.
Okay.
So it's a very small sliver. But certainly pretty close.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bullis?
If it was vacated and you had a buildable lot, how would you get to the lot?
Oh, it's... It has frontage on Stone Drive.
It has what, sorry?
Frontage on Stone Drive.
On which Stone Drive? Because, oh, all right, on the retained Stone Drive, which is in itself a Paper Street, correct?
No.
No. It has frontage on a street. It's just the Paper Street would...
This is Stone Drive right here, and we're talking about this spot right here. Okay. So this is Stone... And I can pull this map up if we need to.
This is this parcel right here?
This is the one he's talking about, and he owns this lot.
And this is connectivity this way?
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Bullis? Jonathan?
Just procedurally, Mr. Bullis will have an opportunity to discuss this at a neighborhood meeting with the town council, correct?
Both at a neighborhood meeting and at a public hearing with the council, yes.
And I could come up with something maybe a little more formal. I just saw this was on the agenda.
Yeah, our view of Mr. Bullis is sort of a top-down review, and when we came to this parcel, as well as many, many others, if there was a reason to keep the Paper Street in place because of some existing use or possible use or what have you, the tendency was to let it stay in effect. Just so you know that, you know, there was a reason behind the recommendation as you see it now.
Well, the Paper Street won't connect to another... Can't connect to the street now, now that the private homeowners dead-end, you know, they own the property, so it won't make it to Red Oak. But, like I say, other than the pedestrian easement, I don't see an issue with vacating it.
Is that it on your comments?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Sue Marie Garette. I am on Cataden Road in Cape Elizabeth. I'm a 50-year Cape Elizabeth resident, plus my children are third-generation Cape Elizabeth Ethians. I understand that this Paper Street issue is very controversial, but I think, looking at the big picture and the long term, it's very important that we retain these Paper Streets on behalf of all the community and for the longevity of our children for years to come. So I appreciate your time and hope that we continue to keep these Paper Streets available for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to be heard? Being done, we'll close the public part of this hearing on this particular matter. The members of the board, we can now discuss the, well, both the general recommendations, scheme of recommendations as it's... You have in your package, and we can decide, disguise what might be done about the one comment we have, which is the Thompson Road property. Any discussion or comments?
With regards just to Thompson Road?
Well, let's take the general picture, and then we'll come to Thompson Road and the scheme of things. And so the public does know, as I indicated before, we've had some fairly long sessions going through these parcels, parcel by parcel by parcel. The staff has produced very fine aerial photography with the parcels overlaid on them, so we can see if there are trails, sewage lines, water lines, various and sundry types of public use that might be made. So this is the end of our process, in case if you're wondering why there isn't more discussion among the board members already, it's happened previously. But that said, Jonathan?
Well, and also one thing, just to reiterate on what Peter was saying. One of the other things that the planning board was charged with looking at was sort of taking a perspective of recommending whether we should vacate or retain some of these Paper Streets based on sort of a planning board perspective, sort of what the grand scheme of things town-wide it would have. It was sort of... It was different than what the conservation commission was looking at, and it's going to be... It was different than what the town council will have the final say. So even with our recommendations, just for anybody who either agrees or disagrees with the recommendations, you will have an opportunity to discuss with the town council, and I... We would most likely, at least for me, I would want you to make sure that you do talk to the town council at these different forums that you're going to get the opportunity to speak at. With regards to specifically what we were looking at with the Thompson Road, I can understand... Forgive me, I don't remember the name of the citizen that contacted us, but I could see what their thoughts were with wanting to possibly keep that stretch of the Thompson Road, Paper Street, open because it does appear that they did buy two lots behind two houses, and looking at the lot that they do have frontage to Beach Bluff Terrace, it may be sort of, if we did, if that Thompson Road was vacated, that it would make that lot basically hard to access. That said, I do think that if... I don't know. I think that possibly that we could allow a retention of that, the back, the front, the front stretch, and then a vacation of the back stretch, but that's just a thought on that Thompson Road.
Maureen, could you clarify, on the Thompson Road, the first 200 feet is now in full use as a driveway, right?
Yes. The first 200 feet is actually a private accessway that was approved by the planning board.
Right.
And the first two lots actually use that for access.
Right. And then the next 625 feet?
If you measure from Shore Road back 625, then...
Oh, so that's the next 425?
Yes. So, and I meant, each of these measurements are from the intersection with Shore Road for ease of making motions. But if you wanted to retain all the way up to the lot that's outlined in blue, which was the, and I also forget their name, but the property owner who asked for that to be retained, that's the first 625 feet. And then if you wanted to retain it through their lot to their far edge, that's about 900 feet.
And the Quinlan and Mr. Quinlan?
Yes, that's the one.
Which parcel is theirs?
Their parcel is the lot that's outlined in blue.
That L-shaped one? So they were essentially saying they'd like it to...
They want to retain Thompson Road. It's a 25-foot right-of-way.
Right.
And the thing is, if you have a right-of-way, you need to measure your setbacks from the edge of the right-of-way. That's why, for the people further down the road, the size of the building envelope for the lots that they have purchased that are to the rear of the Beach Bluff Terrace, basically lots that have frontage on Thompson Road, the building envelope on those lots are fairly small because they have to measure a 20-to-30-foot setback off of that Thompson Road right-of-way. If you get rid of Thompson Road, their building envelopes get bigger.
But if you got rid of Thompson Road, only up to just 525, that 5...
Six, 625.
625.
Right.
Then it would still, it would allow them 25 foot more of the building.
No. If you keep it, if, yes, if you keep, if you go to 625 and then you recommend vacation beyond 625, everyone that's more than 625 feet from Shore Road, that section of Thompson Road, if the council accepts your recommendation, would be vacated, and then that 25-foot space would be divided in half and go to each side, which in both of their ca... In most of the cases, it's going to the same person.
But in actual fact, that increases it by 12 or something like that?
Well, since most of the people that own the land on Beach Bluff Terrace have purchased lots behind them, it's mostly the same people. So, for example, the Quinlan lot, they've purchased not just the land behind their house, but behind a couple of other lots. Yeah. Peter, you've got questions?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So if we vacate Thompson Road, and you're saying a number of people on Beach Bluff Terrace have purchased the lots behind them, should they choose to develop those lots, where would the access come from?
All of these people, the expectation was their access would come from Beach Bluff Terrace.
So from a planning perspective, assuming what I think is rather unlikely, that all of those lots would be developed, we would have a whole line of houses there, sort of double accessed from Beach Bluff Terrace, and I wonder whether that's really a good planning tool. If there are lots back there that we anticipate will be developed, wouldn't it be better from a planning perspective to retain that road and have all of those lots accessed there rather than kind of doing double access from Beach Bluff Terrace, which I don't think seems to me to end up with more traffic on a rather small road than...
And lots of bright turns.
And lots of kind of unusual, you're right, turning in and out of driveways. Now, my guess is, most of those people who own the back lots at this point don't intend to develop them, but on the other hand, and even if they say they don't now, their children might at some point. So it seems to me kind of short-sighted to lose the rights to that road when there's a whole string of lots there.
So, and I know...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have we heard anything from the resident that lives on the second house down on Thompson Road? The one that abuts the...
No, we have not.
No?
Right. To answer Mrs. Valander's question, whether it's a good planning position or not is really what the board's being asked to do.
Right.
Beach Bluff Terrace, I believe, is a 40-foot wide right-of-way, if not 50. I'm almost positive it's 40. Thompson Road is a 25-foot wide right-of-way, so it is horribly substandard-sized road. Beach Bluff is a road that we know we can get emergency personnel down, and it's paved, and it gets plowed, and Thompson Road is marginal, very, very marginal. It would never be accepted by the town. If they, if somebody wanted to make it a 40-foot or 50-foot wide right-of-way, I don't think that the lots that are left on there would be big enough to actually build on at that point. So definitely, that's what the question is for the planning board. Is it, does it make more sense to preserve the rights to Thompson Road, or does it make more sense to continue to use Beach Bluff? Some of the property owners on Beach Bluff have informally, over the years, come in to explore the potential for building on those back lots, and one of my concerns has been that they keep forgetting there's a Paper Street there, and some of them are trying to build on the Paper Street, which, you know, from a title perspective is bad, bad news. Some of, I want to make, I want to make it very clear that we have not evaluated the buildability of the lots on Thompson Road, and if you look at our zoning map, it appears that at least some of them have substantial RP2 wetlands on them. So if you wanted to build Thompson Road, you would have to alter RP2 wetlands to build it. So those are some of the things for the board to consider as you're looking at this recommendation.
But this, the parcel from the folks who submitted the letter?
Yes.
This L-shaped parcel, they've picked up, they've done a little assembly of lots over here, so they do have enough space to build on?
If they have a dry spot.
No, true enough, assuming, but I take their point to be that if they did that, they would have to run a private access driveway to the back lot.
Next to their existing home, and that would be very tight.
Yeah, and to Elaine's point, I guess if all of these people started assembling parcels back here to build on, they would all have to have private access driveways through the existing parcels and hook up on Beach Bluff Terrace.
Yes, they would.
Which, from a planning point of view, doesn't sound like a great outcome, although a 20-foot road isn't that great a deal either.
It's a planning problem.
So from my perspective, I think when, my thought was, when we did make the preliminary recommendation that we vacate Thompson Road, was the idea that the people who were buying these lots were buying the lots that abutted their own property, thinking that, oh, a vacation of this Paper Street makes sense because it takes away the fact that there's a Paper Street, increases these people's land value, and in case they did want to build on it, they wanted to make their own plans for their own property, that they would have that opportunity. The change that my perspective has, when the Quinlans contacted us and noted that one of the reasons that they did buy the properties that not only went directly behind them but also up, was with this idea that, hey, there's a Paper Street, we can have access to this Thompson Road if we have that, which I think, in a way, I give them credit for thinking that way and having that plan. So my thought on this would be to, unless we hear from some owners, some property owners at the end of Beach Bluff Terrace that would be opposed to vacating the back portion of Thompson Roads up to the either 625 feet or 900 feet, that I would still recommend vacating those, that Paper Street at that end, and then leaving the first 625 feet, retaining that, because I think the Quinlans make a good point that they have a unique position, that their property does appear to, I don't know what the wetland restrictions would be, but does appear that they may have two buildable lots behind them, and that they should, if they did purchase that property with the idea that there is a Paper Street, that that could gain them access, not a 40-foot wide road, but a 25-foot private driveway, that they shouldn't have that sort of, the rugs taken out from underneath them. So my recommendation would be to, and I know this is just a recommendation, the town council's going to have the ultimate say on it, but my recommendation would be to retain the 625 feet while vacating the remainder of, well, actually, yeah, it would be the, I guess, the 625 feet and vacating the rest of it, unless, I'm not sure if the Quinlans, and I know they're not here tonight, but indicated that they wanted the Paper Street over their own property kept, but maybe in an abundance of caution, we might want to retain that, too, and then they can make a, they can speak to the town council about getting rid of that, but... And also, that's taking into perspective, too, that we have not heard from the residents who do live at the end, that second house down on Thompson Road, because I know that Paper Street goes right through their property.
The section to the left of the proposed street, it's got no markings on it.
It's open land. It's private property, one big lot.
One big lot. Is it fieldable at some stage, you think?
Probably.
Probably.
But they have hundreds of feet on Shore Road.
Yeah. So that mostly at some stage, maybe, maybe not, maybe developed, and wouldn't rely on this road for access?
I don't see it would, no.
Hi, Elaine or Caroline, do you have any thoughts you'd like to share?
My inclination is to not vacate the street at all, and...
My inclin, my inclination is to not vacate the street at all, and without hearing, without hearing from the other property owners. It's like, okay, let's go down 900 feet, oops, someone else comes up, but geez, there's a gap in between. You know, it's like, not vacate, send the information that we have to the council so they know the discussion that's been had, and, I mean, the final call is theirs. And the people on Beach Bluff can petition the council, can write letters to the council so we have something in writing, like the Quinlans provided, and then the council can make the call, because they're going to make the final call anyway, so.
Elaine?
I, I agree with Caroline, and I would not vacate that street. There are so many times when we have had development occur in much less than ideal circumstances, and I think it may, in the long run, be, make more sense to use Beach Bluff Terrace essentially to access three tiers of lots rather than two, but it may in the long run make sense to preserve that paper street for at least part of that development. And I see a very messy situation when those back lots come in for development, and I would rather retain more rather than fewer options for that to occur. So I wouldn't, from a planning perspective, recommend to the town council giving that up. I would recommend at this stage that it be retained, at least until we have much more information from that neighborhood.
I think I'll go along with that.
Yeah, I, I would like to say, I, I think I share Caroline and Elaine's view. The Quinlans make a fair point in their own interest, as they should, to keep it so they can possibly develop those, their back lot. The very same point, the very same arguments can be made for all of the rest of Thompson Road, where somebody might want to do the same thing, and I can't think of any good reason to cut the matter off so the Quinlans would benefit, but nobody further down the road. So my reaction would be to simply not vacate Thompson Road at all in its entirety, and leave the matter for the local area folks to talk about at the neighborhood meetings in Phase Two, if they're so inclined.
Well, I, I would respectfully disagree with that, just like I said, but I'm not going to, I, I would just say we should vacate the first, or vacate the, the back half, and, but that's why there's chocolate and vanilla sometimes.
Yeah, my only comment on that, it seems a bit prescribed and leaning very much towards, you know, that it's done specifically to enhance that particular, that particular site by cutting it off at that point, because if it was allowed to go on, that site becomes unbuildable, but if you cut it off at that point, it mostly becomes buildable.
Well, my, my point was that I would give the Quinlans the opportunity to keep, to retain that paper street up to their property, but then I would, my thought was, the people at the back end of Beach Bluff Terrace, and granted, this is without hearing from them to know if they want this or don't want this, but you have, I see, one, two, three, looks like four lots at the back of Beach Bluff Terrace, all of which are almost whole lots, square lots, that I'm sure would, and like I said, I don't know this for sure because we haven't heard from them, but it looks like there's no benefit of a paper street going through their property except for limiting what they can do with their property. And that's what I don't like. I, I would like to see those people who own this property have the right to do what they want and not have that paper street there. But I think that that's something that they can address with the town council, so I don't really think that I need to take up the board's time anymore with that.
With all due respect, that's, unless they have room to develop and hadn't thought about it, in which case they would want the street just up to their lot and not beyond it. I mean, I mean, you said before, it was thoughtful to come up with this idea, extend it. So there's, there's pros and cons, but the other people on the street may not have thought about it yet, but maybe they might after this meeting.
And my hope is that they'll talk to the town council about it, so.
So that's why I would retain it for, for a while, and then let everybody discuss it with, with more knowledge than possibly they have at the moment.
Well, that's a conversation that can take place at Phase Two hearings, where you have people on either side of the issue who can express their views. I think, from what I'm hearing at the moment, there appear to be four members roughly in favor of changing the recommendation on Thompson Road from retain and footnote three to...
Retain.
Retain.
No, no.
I'm sorry, to eliminate footnote three, which would essentially say the Thompson Road Paper Street would retain its full length. To bring this particular point to a conclusion, would somebody like to make a motion to eliminate footnote three, which would then make the recommendation be to retain Thompson Road?
A recommendation to consider that planning board remove note three from the Thompson Road U-10-1 plan.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Again, any discussion on the second motion? In favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion carries four in favor, one opposed. On the point raised by Mr. Bullos, which I don't think we necessarily have to entertain this evening, I'd like to thank Mr. Bullos for making his point, and like to get some sense of the board of what we might do with it. Caroline?
I would like to, I'm under the assumption, I should say, that when this recommendation goes to the council, that, that piece of information would go along with it. The fact we've had a public meeting, it's part of public record, I would certainly hope that his comments would be appended to whatever we send to the, to the town council. So I don't, I am not inclined to change our recommendation, but I certainly support his efforts to, to do what he can to sway them.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Bullos recognized in his presentation that at the next phase, he could come in with a little bit more specific and detailed presentation in writing, preferably, you know, laying out your arguments and so forth. So you, you would still have ample opportunity to make your point. I think I shared Caroline's view that we should not change our recommendation on that particular parcel this evening. That doesn't take a motion unless somebody wants to change it. Okay? Is there any other discussion the board would like to have on this topic before we go to a vote?
Are you going to accept the vote for the whole thing, or are we going to, are we going to go through each individual one again?
The whole thing.
The whole thing, yeah, it's this, this spreadsheet.
Okay.
And we have that one amendment eliminating footnote three. With that in mind, will entertain a motion? Would somebody like to make one? Elaine?
Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered, that based on the meeting materials and the facts presented, the planning board recommends that the paper street shown on the paper street inventory chart, as amended at this meeting, be vacated or retained. Where paper streets are recommended to be retained, the planning board's recommendation is based on the features found in and adjacent to the paper street as identified on the paper street inventory chart.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the second motion? Is there anything on the Thompson Road note? No, I, if you take out footnote three, I think everything, Maureen?
I think, yeah, as long as you take that out.
Okay. We have a second motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the last item of business before a final transfer of public comment is the technical amendments package, and we've discussed this at our workshop, Maureen, would you like to give us the background on this?
Sure.
Amendment that you submitted?
I think most of the board is thoroughly, painfully familiar with all of the zoning amendment packages you've been working on over the years, most of them coming out of the comprehensive plan referred by the council. But it has been the town's practice to periodically assemble a group of otherwise unrelated amendments that are more cleanup, clarification-type amendments. We've called them miscellaneous packages or technical amendments, and over the last couple of years, we've got another list that we're, we're working with. So the thought is that the planning board should ask the council for authorization to start work on a technical amendments package. And what you have in front of you is basically the running list, just in the last day, I came up with two more items we could probably put on here. But what you're asking is for them to authorize you to start work on, on a package, that you would cover these items on this list and other items, so that as we continue to reach out to town staff, or a couple of things other also pop up, we would just add them to the package, and the intent would be to put that package together, go through the typical process of a public hearing, and then send them back to the council for consideration. This kind of effort, you know, easily could take six months.
Caroline?
This potentially is a stupid question, but would we set a limit on the number that we would include in this package, like we would, we might add others, but we wouldn't exceed 20, or we wouldn't exceed 15?
I, I wouldn't. I can tell you, I became aware, well, just recently, of something that's going to be on the council agenda next month, and when they act on that item, they may also want to initiate an ordinance amendment adjustment because of that item. This is a very convenient package to drop those kind of things into.
Okay.
So the important thing is to make sure people understand, this is still a very, very transparent process, that there would be a very detailed memo that would explain each and every memo, where it is, why it's being done, so that it's not an effort to kind of hide things.
Then would you have to have them have to have a public meeting on each of the item?
No. We would treat it as a package of amendments similar to the land use amendments package the planning board has just completed. That was a variety of amendments. They sort of had an organizing theme, but they came out of two different ordinances, actually three different ordinances and multiple sections, so there wouldn't be a limit on the number unless the planning board wants to do that. There wouldn't be a certain subject area, it's just a, it's a cleanup for the most part.
If I can make one more comment, I think it says it in here, but I think it's really important. Why would you do this? The main reason for doing it is, one, to protect the town from unintended interpretations of existing ordinance provisions. When you write ordinance provisions, you're taking your best effort, but things come up, and all of a sudden, what you wrote seems to not be what you, what the town said it wanted. So this is an opportunity to protect the public interest. The other thing, the reason you do it is to provide better customer service, because sometimes, again, people will come in with questions, and you look at the ordinance, and you're kind of scratching your head, and you're saying, gee, I guess we could have been a little clearer about that. So I think this is both a customer service, customer service benefit, and a protect the public health, safety, and welfare benefit.
Further comments? I don't know if the practice, wouldn't necessarily have a formal motion on this, or should we just?
I would, I would suggest you would make a formal motion that you, and I don't believe I wrote a formal motion for you.
I will, I will propose a motion that this, the memorandum based upon this draft, with any changes by Maureen approved by the chair, could be submitted to the town council.
You just said it. But you can't. You just made the motion.
Move to the memorandum based upon this draft memorandum with any changes prepared by Maureen and approved by the chair, be submitted to the town council, so we can get a tweaked-up here satisfaction.
I saw a thumbs up here, so I guess that's a second.
Henry, yeah?
Yeah.
This is a British second.
Absolutely, old chap, you know.
We have a second motion, any discussion on the second motion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There is an opportunity for public comment, and seeing no members present, we'll open and close.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Next motion would be to adjourn. Henry has also given his second.
I agree.
All in favor? We adjourn.